I'm not, give me one second. Eddie was working on mine.
And I supposed to bring up to you Brian, I guess Wes probably called and talked to Ramsey also. Did you talk to him?
Yes, sir.
Okay, he said if commissioners whatever they vote to do, then we hand deliver whatever it is, so that he gets in the paper.
Give me one second, I need to call Eddie because I had him working at 7:30 last night.
All right, it's 9:32 a.m., August 14th, Tuesday morning. We'll bring this special session of Commissioners County Court over. Let's record show Larry Holsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, Don Krantz are all present, and the auditor is getting his presentation together.
I think that should be everything I need. I'm just gonna go ahead and get everything I need here. I'm having to back it over into my computer to get it. What's the first item?
Item number one, discuss take action to approve proposed salaries for elected officials for fiscal year 2019. As always, the key word is proposed, and we have to give notification to all elected officials if we do move down that path, and then we go from there. It's not in stone, it's just proposed. You just thought you were ready, huh?
Yeah, I had the other thing up on my computer, not that one, okay. And I've got a printout for you gentlemen. Matt? Excuse me? It's up there.
Thank you.
This is what, although we're prohibited from talking about the budget per se, that is the numbers that are in the budget that was proposed by the judge. As you're aware, there are certain statutory things that we have to do regarding elected official salary, and one of those is having a formal vote on them, and then also we have to advertise them in the paper. A letter goes to each elected official informing them of their proposed salaries for the coming year.
And this is, is the 2% that we talked about for the employees and elected officials, correct?
Yes, sir, it's taking their existing, this year's salary and applying the 2% increase across the board. The 2% only affected the salary column, obviously nothing was changed on any allowances for any of those positions that also received state subsidies.
So if they look at the last line on FY 2018, last on 2019, they get the full picture?
That's correct, with allowances, yes, sir.
That's allowances, the salary is the 2%, everything's included on the last line on 2018 and 2019.
Yes, sir.
Let's see exactly what the difference is. Do we have any question discussion for Brian that he needs to, or I need to try to explain?
Well, there was one department come to us and talked about, she wanted to know why hers wasn't the same as others.
Right. And I think when Brian and I talked to you about it, it's the way the numbers of salary survey came out to where the salaries fell for you.
No, they never talked to me about it.
You did in my office with Brian.
I brought it up to you and you said you'd check into it.
And we talked-
I never heard of that word.
And we told you where the numbers come from that day. Brian and I both sat there and told, explained to you it came from the salary survey, and I could check and reaffirm the numbers, which I did, and I believe maybe a commissioner did besides me, maybe not, I can't speak for that, but, okay, maybe not, maybe I'm the only one that reaffirmed the numbers.
I was-
And I know you went and talked to one or two of the commissioners, and what did they get back to you with?
And I looked at the salary survey.
All right, and?
I'm still confused.
So, are you saying the numbers don't, are not right, and everybody should be paid the same, what are you saying?
Well, I mean, I thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that we looked at the surrounding counties, Busky, Hoodie, Ruffin, Johnson-
I believe that is correct.
-Treasure, Tax Assessor, County and District Clerks are all the same salary except for Johnson County, and they don't do payroll in their office. And I looked at three other counties that have the same population as ours, and as well, they either make the same, or the Treasurer makes more.
Really?
Yeah.
When the Carver case, where six employees, Trackass has four, you have one?
All three of those other counties, the County and District Clerk is combined, like ours is.
Okay.
I mean, I know different counties do different things.
Right. Is that in line with all the numbers that we've been down through and discussed?
It's what in line.
As far as the salaries that we have listed and proposed, and what we did in the previous salary survey last year?
Yes, we took out one county, Austin, threw them with a question, and went with E. Ruffin, Hoodie, and Johnson, and it's the average of what they pay, and that's what it was based on.
So is, is that in line with-
The 2% added on, it should still remain status quo. So, you're saying that the Treasurer and the Tax Assessor and the County District Clerk don't all make the same? Not the ab, not, we averaged all three salaries. If they all got the same in all the counties, then when you average it, then it would still be the same. But they're apparently not, and I don't have the documents here in front of me. Okay, well, I have it in my office, and I have it on the spreadsheet, so maybe we could look at that again?
That'd be good, yeah.
Thank you.
Depending on what they decide to do, if they vote to do anything, then we just have to look at the existing that's there. Do y'all have any questions on that, or comments?
Are we gonna vote on this today?
Well, if it's proposed, we need to, so we can submit the letters to all the elected officials, so they have time to, as Suzie is discussing it and taking it further.
And I would still need to dispute it.
Right. And that gives her time to do all that.
Yeah.
Before it's actually voted on.
We have to, you know, again, this is the proposed, and, you know, because there's certain time deadlines, we're always getting to this time.
So you can have proposed and vote on it and still be under debate?
That's correct.
Okay.
Before we do the actual accepted budget, yes.
These are all mandates from the comptroller, that we've got the-
That's right.
And the tax transparency.
Issue letters to all elected officials, get to advertise them some papers, see what-
He's got a request.
He just don't want to say it out loud?
That's right.
Or he don't want to repeat it out loud, let's put it that way. All right.
So why do we need a motion to pass this?
We need a motion to accept the proposed, so we can move forward with the letters to the elected officials.
I'll make the motion.
I have motion by Larry, so I have a second.
Second.
And a second by Kenneth, all in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against, and once you get that letter Suzie, then start the ball rolling, process. This is never a good sign. You're up and moving again?
Well, we just got lots of handouts here today. The next item, I want me to give you the judge.
All right, item number two, discuss take action to approve proposed tax rate for the year 2019, and propose, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, as long as we go over what we figure we're going to do, then as long as we come in under that, we're in good shape.
That is correct.
And we can approve one number and try to go above it at a later date without starting the whole process over.
That's correct. The reason that I've issued a proposed, or I'm recommending a proposed on this document, again, this document is required by the Comptroller's Office, I'm recommending that we go ahead and do a proposed with a full three cents. Right now, we know our budget's at 2.8 and change, however, if we document the proposed at three, and we do come in at the 2.8 and change, we're fine.
Or if they decide to change the whole budget and not do anything, then you don't have to use any portion of that.
Correct. The only thing is if we put the actual numbers, what the proposed budget is right this moment, and you make any change whatsoever, and it changes the tax rate out six decimal points, we've got to start this process all over again.
And we may run out of time.
Correct, with weekly paper, we're limited. So, with the three cents, knowing full well that we're not going to be at a full three, it's just the, it's just the most, I guess, expedited way to get this filing done. It also requires us to put a purpose of what the, why we stated purpose, and I put in there increase op, should be increased operational expenses and unfunded mandates, but we can put whatever you guys choose to put in there. The calculated rates are there, and then the only other thing in this document you'll see at the bottom, is we also need to have two tax hearings, and I pulled up the budget calendar that we had originally passed out, and we had proposed two tax hearing dates of September 10th and September 13th. Again, those could change. The only thing that requires of the governmental code is that the tax hearings cannot be less than three days apart, so, so we can't have one in the morning and one in the afternoon and call those two tax hearings, so.
And the tax rate that we may or may not approve, at the end of the day, will be below the 49, it'd be roughly 48.9, 48 whatever.
That is correct, yes, sir.
At our current budget that we have right now.
Yes, sir.
Unless it's changed.
Because we are looking at a tax rate that's going to be above the effective rate, because we've chosen not to do that in prior years, it does require the two hearings.
Any questions Brian and I can try to answer? But we need, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The .49159, that's on the sheet you just handed down?
Yes, sir, at very top, and also-
That's roughly three cents, right?
That is exactly.
Okay, and we had looked at a 2.8 roughly?
Yes, sir.
2.749, duh, duh, duh.
Right.
Effective tax, at the 2.8, that's above our effective tax rate?
That's correct, and that necessitates, because we did not choose to do the effective tax rate in prior years-
Last year, yeah.
And because we're electing, or proposing, rather, proposing a rate higher than the effective rate, we have to have two tax rate hearings.
Okay. And we're staying below the rollback?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, what I need to hear from you gentlemen is, are you comfortable with the three cents, or maybe not comfortable, but, you know, that we're going to do that? Also, the stated purpose, we can change that, that's our opportunity to communicate to the taxpayers, and also, we have to, at this point in time, advertise the date of the two hearings.
And let's try to clarify again, before the actual budget is adopted, we can use any of the .02 to the three cents. We just can never exceed the three cents for many different reasons, but we could use any portion of that.
Correct.
To do whatever our budget may be at the end of the day.
If y'all decide to go with the rollback rate, we would just have to start this process of disclosure over.
And some of the unfunded mondays come out yesterday in court reporting, 5,000 more dollars. There's a lot that we have to have for every one of our courts. Not that I'm trying to justify this, I'm just saying, our expenses on our court system keeps going up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I make a motion if we approve this proposed tax rate at .49159, and the purpose is, I mean-
Adding dates?
And the dates, good too, 10, 9, 10, and 9, 13, 2018.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Larry. Do we have any further questions or discussion for Brian?
I think we should strive for the 2.8.
Without a doubt.
Yeah.
This isn't a, this isn't a blank check, this is just so that we can make adjustments without causing the process to-
All right, I got you.
All right, I have a motion by Kenneth, and a second by Larry. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion?
Excuse me?
I'm supposed to take a record?
Record vote.
I have to have, sorry about that. Larry, how do you vote? Four?
Yes.
John, how do you vote?
Four.
Danny? Four. Kenneth?
Five, four.
Five, four, zero against. And I think that has to be recorded with Wes too, doesn't it, how each one voted? Glad you said that, because I didn't remember that. All right, you ready to move on to item three, or?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number three, discuss take action on financial status, cash needs for Expo Center for remainder of budget year, end of August and September.
I'm gonna give you a couple of handouts for review, and we'll get to them as we go through this. We've been watching the Expo bank account, and it's now to a point where we have got to intercede. Give me one second, let me pull up the, okay. What I've done is kind of created some information here for you. For the year 2018, where we're in right now, this is through July, the Expo has brought in operating revenue from all their different line sources of $514,363.88. We've moved over the subsidy from the General Fund of $240,000. Total expenses excluding any capital have amounted to $799,747.86. Capital expenditures through July, $356,683.07, and the ending cash balance on 7/31, combined with the cash flow account, the cash balance.
Here we go, Kenneth. Oh, yeah.
Thirty thousand eight eighty-nine eighty-six.
That's your payback for yesterday, right?
Say that number again.
Total cash, thirty thousand eight eighty-nine eighty-six. The checks that the Treasurer printed yesterday that you guys approved, if you'll look at that one report, it says accounts, accounts payable register on the top, 85,243.81 was the checks, the expense checks that the Treasurer printed, and they're still sitting in my So as you can see, just releasing the checks, we're in that way, right there. And then, in addition to that, there is still $54,550 of insurance proceeds that we're holding, related to the ampathy of the, that, you know, is cash that really, we've already received, we owe it when Verde sends us that net invoice.
It's already obligated.
It's already obligated, yes, sir. If we tie, if, you know, if we pull the reins on operating expenses at the Expo, and I, and I say this not pulling, you know, this is based upon the results of 2017, so I know that it's achievable, and this is excluding payroll. The operating expenses for August were $55,128, and operating expenses for September were $37,092, again excluding payroll. And then, there's four more payrolls this year that the Expo has, $88,400 is what the total cost of those payrolls will be, meaning that we've got basically total obligations through the end of the, end of this fiscal year, $320,413.81. The expected revenue, again based upon historical, August, $45,367, September, $57,987, amounts to $103,354, meaning that, you know, my projection of the additional cash that the Expo is going to need, you know, absent any surprises, is $217,059.81. Now, we have, you know, to be fair, we have paid some money out of his budget for the tourism grant program, $43,110, and you can see those checks there, to win more, we paid the Office of the Governor, Joe Beaver, there's probably one more Office to the Governor, and I don't know how many more grants are out there projected before the end of this fiscal year. But this $43,110 is booked as expenses, and obviously it's cash that has left the account that will come back, but it's not going to come back to this budget year, it's based historically, we're talking January, February. The capital expenditures for the Expo of this year, a sound system for $99,237.41, the LED lighting project was $239,854, they bought a laptop for $620.27, they bought some tables for $3620.29, because a customer was going to reimburse, the customer reimbursed half so far, $1810.15, then SLG installed the Wi-Fi hotspots for $15,161.25, and then just in the last few days, they purchased another $3,700 of tables, so I'm not really sure, I just caught that on my reports, I didn't, it wasn't on any capital request sheet, but it looks like the same amount as the first order of papers. I don't know if that customer, is that customer paid for the second group?
Both, both of those purchases are going to be reimbursed.
Okay.
The Expo did not buy those tables.
Okay.
It comes out of our budget, but then goes back in.
Okay, so they're gonna finish reimbursing that first group, and then pay for the second, is that it? That's correct. Okay. But that's where we are right now on the Expo, so, you know, where I'm coming up with is that we've got to effectively fund them, they're gonna need $217,060 bucks. I ran cash projections, now, as a CPA, we really don't like doing projections, I mean, we struggle hard to be accurate with the past, let alone the future, and I'd much rather talk about what my wife means when she says it's fine, than talk about cash and projecting stuff. Here is where we are right now. In July, the General Fund ended with $13,186,694.10. Historically, August and September, we see a very marketed uptick in spending, we have last minute purchases-
September.
-by department heads, and revenues are, again, based upon historical numbers of last August, last September, so I'm projecting at this point in time, conservatively, that we'll end the year with our General Fund reserve being 11,001,86,694.10. You can see that the prior fiscal year, we had 10,00627,495.07, meaning that I'm projecting a reserve increase of about $559,000, if everything-
Which is good, that's what we've been trying to work for, for four years.
That's correct.
Was to raise the reserve.
And, you know, so, and again, this is not a hill I'm gonna die on, this is just a best guess estimate. You know, one, one different, one expensive situation can create a big change in all of this, but that's where I'm standing as of about midnight last night, running my numbers. Now, where would we get the money to move over to fund this $217,000? Well, we had $10,000 left in the subsidy account, remember, we budgeted 250, so that was on your check request yesterday to pay the remaining 10,000, so now we're down to 207,000. Basically, if you got my email this morning about bringing your financials, you can book in July, what it would take, is it would take just a gnarly budget transfer, but I would just literally need to go line by line in every department and every elected official, and just hunt and gather, small amounts, large amounts, we've got, you know, Road Bridge has got some significant money there, because we have two highly paid employees that have retired this year, even though we budgeted those salaries for the full year, so I've got some money there, you know, but there's no one place I can go to and grab it, it's going to be, it's going to be the budget transfer, budget transfers to do that, to transfer an additional subsidy. And budget transfer is really the only way that I'm recommending, if this is what you're wanting to do, because we don't have to reopen the budget as a declared emergency to-
Yeah, we won't do that.
Right, to increase it, or to opt for anything like that, so.
Because of state's definition, this wouldn't really be true to definition of emergency.
Granted. The check run, you can see, I mean, we paid a lot of, a lot of expenses, and the other report I gave to you as well, is a two-year pocket loss statement, which kind of compares the first, the first two columns compared to July 2018 to 2017, and then the next two columns compare year-to-date, 2018 to 2017, so you can see the differences in the expenses. And so just for, just for ease, I calculated some of the differences here for you. You can see that in revenue, where at the close of, close of July, revenue at the Expo is down, operating revenue, is down $23,693, a year-over-year. The subsidy from the General Fund is up, obviously, $147,705. The concerning thing is total expenses excluding capital are of $140,000, and then, of course, capital purchases, I pulled those out, because, you know, those, we all know what they were, the LED lighting, the sound system, and stuff, so, and then, of course, the cash difference. We ended, we ended July last year with $441,000 in cash in the Expo, and now we're down to $30,000, so that's a $410,000 spending year-over-year, but primarily, you can see 353 of it went to capital.
Yeah, but that's why we, we had to plan on spending it for that.
Agreed, I'm not, this is not an indictment of any sort, this is just a recap, so that you see where the numbers went, where they go.
And we've had some major repair expenses on old equipment.
Granted, and that's why-
Yeah.
That's why I gave you this run sheet as well, you can see to, to Detro Mechanical, we paid $10,000, I've got a check for $10,467. I've got a check for ten thousand, four sixty-seven. Uh, I think the other one, uh, maybe from one, the other, uh, uh, air conditioning company. Uh, Airmasters, eleven thousand, five hundred dollars for that replacement.
We spent more on HVAC in the last six months than I have in the last four years.
How is the savings we were anticipating on the lighting, how's it coming out?
I have not, I have not seen, uh, I mean, if you look at the two-year. On page two, uh, line item number four-four-oh, four-four-oh, utility. You'll see that our year-to-date this year is actually higher than last year. Um, so, uh, and we tracked the kilowatt hours and, and of course, it's the arena. I mean, as I, as I said, when we were looking at the lighting, you know, the lighting was just a small portion of that utility bill. And so my concern about that vendors taking twenty percent off the, the light bill, and I, I expressed it in the minutes then, was the light bill, the lights only are a small component of that. If we're not changing air conditioning pattern, we're, that's, you know, and, and sure enough, I mean, the, the arena, the arena electric bill, uh, this month, eleven thousand, two sixty-nine, just for the arena. Uh, it's because, you know, the lights are just such a small amount of that. So we may be saving twenty percent of light costs. But unfortunately, light cost is probably only twenty percent of our electric bill. So when they were taking twenty percent of our grand total electric, they were somewhat disingenuous, uh, estimating those savings. Um, so, um, you know, uh, you know, is there a payback? Sure, but it's probably going to be closer to twenty, twenty-five years than the ten years or shorter that they projected.
Well, I don't think the court, they didn't base that on savings on lights. It either, it either needed to be done or not. If I understand you right, we're two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seven.
Seven, because you got ten thousand.
If I've got ten.
In, in, in the, in the savings.
And basically freeze, you know, again, that's, that's, that's running a very clean August and September expenses.
Right.
Hard question.
What was the question? I don't ask that we, we, we don't really have a choice but to find the hundred, two hundred and seven thousand.
Uh, it's hard for me to see that screening with my new glasses.
Well, I can make it larger.
I really need a printout for that. I can see that, I can see that.
Which part do you need to see more of?
How did we get that way?
Okay, so here's.
What can we do? All right, is this a one-time deal on some of these?
Well, I mean, obviously, when we voted to, to liquidate its reserve, I mean, you know, in any, if, if this situation would have been last year, as you can see, in July of last year, we had a cash balance of four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. So we would have just simply, if we were running some cash deficits, we would have just, uh, we would have just gone to the tax pool account, moved it over. But because we used all the tax pool money for the capital here, you know, now we're down to a thirty thousand and nowhere, no well to run to, to draw out, uh, to meet this cash shortage. You know, and I told, I told the treasurer, you know, I said, okay, I will let you go ahead and print the checks, but we're not releasing them. Because I, I can't, I can't run the risk of county going out there and the checks not being honored. Uh, so that's why we've, you know, they've been sitting in my desk. But they were just printed yesterday. They're not, it's not like we've been holding them for a month or anything like that. And all the employees been paid and.
And just on that amount, we're about fifty-five thousand in a hole right there, fifty-four thousand, just on the amount we wrote yesterday.
Yes, sir.
Because we've got thirty there and then we wrote checks for eighty-five, then we got fifty-five.
I don't have an invoice from Bird Eater yet.
Right.
I don't know what their situation is out there, what they're, uh, where they are on, on that repair. We made, we've made two payments to them, uh, for work done. Uh, yeah, uh, eighty-seven thousand and sixty-five thousand are the, the work that we, uh, we have, that they have built and we have paid for.
Do the insurance money, right?
Correct, the insurance money paid two hundred and two thousand, two ninety, and then the prom is paid the five thousand deductible. So two hundred and seven thousand, two ninety.
The checks you're holding, when's the due date on them? How long we got?
On the.
The checks that you're hoping this week.
Well, I mean, you've got the list. I mean, obviously, some would be more pressing than others. I mean, utility bills would have to go out pretty quickly. Uh, you know, City of Glenrose, uh, their due date's tomorrow. So, uh, you know, others, I mean, yes, I mean, from a cash management thing, can I slow them down a little bit? Absolutely, we've used that in the past, but, you know, not more than a couple of weeks, I would think. Um, um, you know, the, the problem is we only really pay once a month. And so by the time it comes to court, some of them may be pretty recent. Some of them may have just been within the last couple of days before court, but others may have been waiting to be paid forty-five days, you know, just depending.
Well, the bills that we all, we got paid, we just got to figure out how to pay.
Yeah, we got to pay them.
Now we got to figure out how to change something.
Bad situation to be in.
We should never get here.
Yeah, we should never be in this situation, exactly.
So what do we have to come up with right now?
Two hundred, two hundred, well, I mean, unless you want to.
That's to the first, that's to the end of the budget year, right? Two seven, two oh seven?
Correct.
Right now, our balance is negative fifty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-one cents for the checks we.
Well, let me ask this question. If we look at our budget, as you checked or, or said, and we do it on a month-to-month basis, rather than try to find this two hundred and seven thousand all at one time. I mean, it, it's in there more than likely.
You, you think there's probably three, four hundred thousand dollars left over this year?
Yes, sir, I, I, but, you know, conservative, I mean, my, my response to that is two parts. Number one, I don't know why y'all would want to do this again.
Right, well, that, uh, and that's what, that's the next.
Right.
There are more questions to follow.
Right, and, and the second thing is, if, if we know this is what it's going to need, I'd much rather sequester that money out of our existing budget than run the risk of, we know we're going to need it, yet we didn't take it all and now we're.
What'd you bring in this weekend, do you know yet? On the bill?
No.
Okay.
It's a high number raised, but I, I don't, I don't know it right yet.
Yeah. Because we still have a little coming in.
Right, and I'm projecting forty-five thousand for the month. I mean, and, and so, you know, I mean, for the month of August, and again, I'm basing that on, on historical numbers.
Right.
Uh, assuming that most of his, his groups are, are more annual, you know, they're repeat groups and things like that.
Was it seventeen and we built up reserve or sixteen?
You can, you can see how the reserve was building up. Uh, we started really kind of picking it up in sixteen, because the reserve turned into two hundred and seventy-five thousand at the end of July.
What we did that year.
We didn't want to borrow money.
If you remember, we, we only allocated ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-five for Frank to get by that year. So we put much less than what the county had, so we norm, that's how we built that reserve up. And then we turned around, spent it.
I guess my point is, all right, we spent it, we spent on lights and other things.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that's already spent and hopefully it'll pay off somehow.
Right, the treasurer closed the tax pool account yesterday and moved the remaining nine thousand and change.
What it shows, we can build some up, but we don't spend it like we've been spending, right? It can be built up.
Like when we allocate two hundred thousand for that extra and above and we don't spend all that, then that's how we built that tax pool to begin with. If we don't spend fifty, then we slide it over there and we have it for like what we're up against right now, year-to-date.
I guess what I'm wanting to know, I know about the lights. Uh, and the air conditioner is, is an expense, but it's not, nothing like two hundred thousand. Have we spent what we're going to spend for a few years there?
Don't have a clue.
There's a couple of things in my budget that wasn't there. For example, Michaela, when she was made full-time in January, I believe, or I think it was the first of February. That money was never in my budget. Y'all voted on that, everything was signed, but the money never got put in. So that's a substantial chunk right there. And then of course, we all know the HVAC that's been ongoing for months. I mean, I'm at the point now where, where DMI is saying, I don't even know why you're putting money into this HVAC system when you should just buy a new unit. Well, obviously, we, we don't have the money for a new unit. Um, Larry, you asked me the other day, is it done? Boy, I sure hope it is. And it seems like this year, how many units did we have? Six at one time? And I guess they were all put in the same time, so does it make sense they're all going out? Maybe. If I remember correctly, I mean, because you remember the, the original building was on air conditioning.
Right.
And then it, then they retrofitted it.
I don't like to have sides on it.
Four years?
Four months.
Were you there then?
There's a towel, no, that wasn't for, I'm sorry. They did all that right before I got in on it.
Sorry, I couldn't resist.
I guess what bothers me, and it's out in the room, nobody's going to talk about, so I'll bring it up, is that we expended cash apparently that we had in reserve with no regard for day-to-day operations and payroll. Apparently that we should have probably seen and projected that we were going to need some of that money, but we as a court, still, I'm taking blame too, voted to expend some of that reserve that we should have kept for day-to-day operations to get us through August, September. Is what I'm being, what I'm seeing, am I wrong?
No, because we didn't want to go in debt.
I agree with you, but what could we done without? Is, is, that's what I'm.
Well, Frank will argue this point, but probably the lighting could have held off another year. I know we held two or three years.
And I'm not disagreeing with you on that, but at that time, we already waited a whole year or more.
Granted.
Before we decided to do that. So at that time, everything was looking okay.
Well, yeah, and as far as my utilities, when I started here, there were two twenty-five a year. And then for the last, I believe until two years ago, we changed it to one eighty. Now it's at one thirty. So it is paying off. I mean, my, we budgeted one thirty now for my utilities, which is a vast difference than two twenty-five.
Factory managers are spending more than bringing in, right? At the bottom line, at the end of the day.
Fell apart this year, without a doubt, my eight, most of it was HVAC. The other biggest chunk was an employee that wasn't in there.
What type of employee? Forty thousand, what?
Yeah.
Fifty was determined at the most.
So even if we took that out, we still would be a hundred and seventy thousand in a hole. A lot of silence here.
We should have took that bid.
We should have did that.
That guy won't buy it.
Damn sure should have, I guess, yeah.
I don't remember.
No, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, he never, he wasn't going to buy it. I tried to sell it to John yesterday and he wouldn't buy it from me.
He gave a bid, but then he didn't call back.
Yeah, he wouldn't never come back. Well, I can't, I don't see that we can do anything besides try to find the money to survive and here's the end and have Frank to grab the news a little tighter between now and the end of the year before maintenance goes.
And the spending's over.
Yep, then next year, hopefully, we'll have a better year.
Yeah, I think the, I think the mantra for August and September as far as expenses has to be just, you know, only a bit bleeding, you know? Otherwise, there's no, I mean, it just has to. I mean, and, and that's the only way to, you know, these are pretty conservative numbers. But again, I based it upon last year, so I know it can be done. It's just, that's just.
We did it in twenty sixteen, we did it. We did it on a lot less money than we're doing right now. And Frank, back then, when we was going through all this, we discussed in detail, you know, a lot of these improvements that we're doing, it's probably going to improve our shows, improve our base, our revenue. We're going to try to get from Longstar. I guess some of that didn't pan out or it's not going to pan out.
No, it, some of it has, but, I mean, I can get a barrel race. I mean, for example, I'll have, uh, historical barrel races, uh, some of the big ones, Winmore. It just depends how many contestants enter and how many stalls I sell. I can still have great barrel races, but if they're not all stalling, meaning there's a big, uh, barrel race in Waco and they're not stalling at my place, they're just going to run and then run at Waco. You know, um, I can tell you this, I, I do have more events booked for August and September this year. My next open weekend as far as my main event is in December. After that, my next open weekend is in July.
Because you have to realize how embarrassing this is to dig ourselves out of this hole. You, I'm sure you realize.
Right, but I think everyone knows, this is not my fault. I inherited this, I'm not saying it's your fault either. We inherited this building.
Yes, we did.
Yeah, I mean, don't get me wrong, I looked at that thing and along the whole way, I let everybody know, this, if this thing's gone haywire. That's not exactly what I said, but what are we going to do? Well, you got to fix it. I mean, the last, we bought a unit just two weeks ago, it was ten or twelve?
Eleven, five.
It seemed like every week I was getting a five or eight thousand dollar HVAC bill. Some of those things that I put off two years ago broke, that I didn't fix, you know, and I had to fix them.
Brian, what, what's the investment we have down there? What, what did he say yesterday? What was that investment?
The original cost.
Sixteen, not, not regional cost, but the investment.
Yeah, and the, the original investment was fifteen, about fifteen and change, almost sixteen million.
Sixteen million dollar investment, but we've got to, we can't just close the doors.
But forgive my sarcasm, but we all know that a business that don't make money is a hobby. We know that. And taxpayers have been paying for a hobby for twenty-five years now. We all been paying for this hobby for a long time. And we did, we were getting it under control, I thought, but this year, we damn sure let it get away from us. Because in sixteen, we had it well within line, the money was way down, that we invested.
I agree.
The profits were within nine hundred and sixteen dollars of where they were the year before. We, we were headed in the right direction.
For twenty years, they was putting a million dollars a year.
That's true. That's true.
We got it down to three hundred thousand.
Well, two hundred next year.
Well, bottom line is.
Make it on two hundred.
Yes.
We didn't think we were going to get four million dollars from the plan. And bottom line is, when the money's not there, people find ways to save.
To make it happen, that's right. And that's what we definitely have to do next year, again, like we did in twenty sixteen, just see where we're at. And like you said, the bleeding, expend, the money is, is over as far as spending.
Right. And, you know, and I hope that the, the, the revenue is, is greater than anticipated and, and so.
Yeah.
You know, basically, you know, what I would, what I would want is direction for me and the treasurer to basically advance them up to. I'm not going to, I'm not going to have, I'm not, we're not going to transfer two hundred and seven thousand dollars at one time in their account, but to, to transfer.
That's more, more how it's trying to get to.
What is necessary. If they need less, they need less, but I, I've got, you know, based upon these numbers, I've got to have at least access to two hundred and seven thousand to, to carry them through.
Well, I guess right now, our main goal is to figure out how we keep everybody paid and happy till the end of September.
Without opening the budget up?
Yes, without opening the budget up.
Do we need to follow on that or is that just the action?
Yeah, no, we're going to have to figure out where we're going to get it and direct Suzie and Brian where to get it and how to come up with it. And rectify the problem where we're not here again.
You know, as far as the identification of where it will come from, just, it's going to come from the general fund. I'll, I'll, it's going to, I mean, it would be too lengthy to sit here and identify each line item, obviously. I'll just have to do the same analysis on each line item to see where they're going to be. And, you know, in the case of department heads, it's not an issue because those are our line items. But in the case of the department head, you know, you might, excuse me, an elected official, you might have some pushback as to why I'm tagging some of their money out of their budgets. So just be prepared for some of that. I mean, I'll try to avoid the elected officials, you know, last, but.
Reality is, elected officials and department heads shouldn't have to suffer because we always spend at the expo. That's the reality. We did it, but they're all going to have to suffer to help us pay for our mistake.
Well, I don't see that they're going to suffer if we're going to have over 500,000 dollars left over.
But y'all keep telling me I'll never get the reserve built up like I want, and now we're getting ready to spend grossly into the reserve that I've been trying to build up. So you know what I'm saying? And I.
I understand where you're coming from, but still.
You can't tell me that I'll never get there, and then we dive off in and spend 207,000 of it.
Ain't nothing going to do about it now, outside of playing for the money to come from.
Problem right there is we got ourselves in this mess, and now we have to get ourselves out.
2017, we spent too much money that could have went into reserve anyway. If you look back on what we did as a court.
Yeah, and I'm not blaming anybody else. I'm taking the full blame. We want recommendations, we did it, we spent it. But it's not good management of the taxpayer's dollars.
Nope.
It's just disturbing.
Understood.
So, recommendation to make a motion to correct this problem.
Would be that the court would direct the treasurer and I to advance an amount up to 207,059 dollars and 81 cents. Or we just went around to 207,060 dollars.
To find it, reallocate it?
Well, obviously, those budget transfers will come to the court in future, at the next session. Just Commissioner France, they're going to be ugly. They're going to be long ones, but, you know, I'll go through and rank them out. But in the meantime, we've got to be able to, to issue a check. At this point in time, we're going to need to issue a check for not understanding what you already got, probably at least 170,000 in the next 30 days.
Is my hypothesis out yet?
I'll make that motion. You state it, I'll make the motion. That's all we can do at this time.
I'll work with you. And then as, as, again, as Frank delivers revenue to the treasurer, and that will offset the need, then, yeah, I mean, it's, it's an amount up to.
And refunds that you're supposed to getting back on the tables?
Yeah, but they're for, I think, four months.
Well, we still, we got some revenue, maybe out six months or four months from the state on reimbursement there.
I guess my only request from us three that's going to be here next year, that two of you, well, fortunately, will be here, is that we keep a close eye on this, and we just don't have to do this again, is my biggest request.
Well, I would be in agreement with that, even though I'm not going to be here.
Right, right.
We got to put some hooks in.
Tapping the noose. Not on you, Frank, I'm saying on the entire expo. I mean, I'm not, yeah. Because I know you probably take a personal noose round your.
Well, of course I take it personal. I mean, it's my.
And you should. It's your director. You're damn right, you should.
But I was handed this building.
Right.
You know, and there's none of this money that has been abused by any means. The grant is a good percentage of it, which, of course, we get reimbursed. The HVAC is the biggest, is probably the largest portion and employee. That makes up probably the most of it. It's not because the budget was abused by any means, because it wasn't.
Well, we probably expended some money we should have kept for overhead, but we did anyhow. We expended the money. So that's beating a dead horse.
Yeah, you're right.
We want to do that next year.
Absolutely.
Right. Operating expenses come first, employees and day-to-day operations. And then if we have any other money left over, then we look at what we can do to make the facility better. If we don't have it, we don't have it, and we don't have to find it at the last minute.
I think we can all look back and realize that maybe we spent some money where we didn't have to.
Well, you know, and here again, I hate to dispute that we didn't need it, because maybe we definitely did it, but day-to-day operations come first, and then, and I know air conditioning is a necessity, I get that. But we just got to scrutinize what we're looking at. Well, I do have a motion by Kenneth, if they can figure out on the wording.
Second.
I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion or problems, issues? Well.
Well, I, we've said a lot. I don't think that I'm not sure that going forward, a quarterly summary.
Review and report?
Right.
Because, you know, begrudgingly, I will, I will vote for this to pay our bills, because I'm not going to have it be said that I didn't vote to pay our bills, but it'll be begrudgingly when I vote for it to take care of this. But we have to take care of it.
So we have to pay our bills.
We have to pay our bills.
No, what I'm saying.
No, I know. Yeah, I get it, yeah. That Frank and everybody ought to sit down quarterly and come up with the court, come to the court and see where we're at every 90 days.
Like two-year comparison report, we've already got defined in our system. I mean, it's ready to.
Well, implement it.
So we can do it very easily.
Absolutely. And, and in fact, it could be done on a monthly basis.
And maybe not, that may not be the only department.
Right, right. It's just the one that we're having to rescue today, exactly.
It could be somebody in the Russian potential.
All right, I have a motion by Kenneth, and I have a second by John. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said motion, whether begrudgingly or not? That's five for and zero against. And back to you, Kenneth.
Right, no, I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like dawn today. I'm ready to get out of here.
Ready to go home.
There are budget transfers, I guess.
All right, item number four, budget transfer.
There being none, but you know there's one a-coming. But we'll go to the next item, though.
Item number five, approved county bills.
This is based on executive session action yesterday. What we're going to do is I'm asking permission to go ahead and to pay that 4,000 dollars. However, the check will not be released until the contract is duly executed and signed. I just did not want to wait a whole nother month before this guy got to work.
Well, do I have a motion to move forward?
So moved.
I have a motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor of said media, I'm set, yeah. Five for, my mind's on you, Frank. Sorry about that. All right. Now do I have a motion?
Motion to pay the bill.
That was it.
That was it?
All right, I make money with it.
Now you're lost as bad as I am. Now do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion with adjourns, so we can all go home.
I have a motion by Don. Do I have a second? I'll second. All in favor of said motion. Five for, zero.
I already made the motion, y'all just got it, hit them each.
Just FYI, I have proposed tax rate code. It's going to be coming out next week, too.
Cool.
I told Wes what we need to do. You want me to handle it, I will have you.
I'll have somebody mail it to you.
Cool.
PDF in this.
Take care of your health, yeah. He just had a couple of stents put in his heart.
Yep.
Been there and there, haven't you?
I've been there. Yep.
What are they called? Purple Crop Club or something?